Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting for May. I will call our meeting to order, and tonight our prayer will be done by Chaplain Kevin Barker from the Smyrna Police Department, and our pledge will be done by Mike Strange, our Director of Utilities. If you will all stand with us, please.
Hello, everyone. Oh, Father God, we come to you this night, Father. We ask that you bless this council, Father. We ask that you bless our community, the city of Smyrna, Father. Father, we ask that we have safety in this community, Father, and let us make wise decisions, Father. And Father, let us do all things unto you, Father. For, Father God, you are the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords, so therefore, Father, we thank you for what you're gonna do this night, Father. We thank you for the things that's gonna be heard this night, Father, and we will forever give you glory. And we thank you in Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag.
My wishes to the flag, happy United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Mike. Ms. Amber, if you'll do roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilwoman P. Bolts, here. Councilman Cole?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Morrell?
Present.
Councilman Short?
Here.
Councilman Sullivan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins?
Here.
Mary?
Here.
And now move on to item three, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the April 11th, 2023, regular meeting and the April 27th, 2023 work session and special called meetings of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
It orders to form, ma'am.
Great. Do any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian or Amber, any correspondence or communications tonight?
No, ma'am.
Awards or recognitions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing discussion. I always like to read each one of the items on the consent agenda, so those in the audience and those at home know exactly what we're voting on. Also, if there's an item that council would like to pull off and discuss individually, we can do that. So our first item on the consent agenda is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Hellis Construction Incorporated to resurface the tennis courts at Lee Victory Recreation Park. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the contract in addendum with SEC for the Meadowbrook Project. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with E Source and Rye Engineering for Phases One, Two, and Three of the Water Loss Program. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with CMS Uniforms and Equipment Incorporated relative to the Fire Department uniforms. Item E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Ed M. Feld Equipment Company Incorporated, Fire Department Bunker Boots and Turnout Suspenders. Item F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with North Alabama Fire Equipment Company Incorporated for turnout coats, turnout pants, and fire hoods. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Safe Industries for Fire Department Gloves and Helmets. Item H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract for a 3D laser scanner kit at the police department. Item I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract for audit services for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. And Item J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the Smyrna Police Department to adopt a new standard operating procedure for promotions. Counsel, is there anything you'd like to pull off and vote on individually?
I don't wanna pull it off, but on Item J, could we get a red line addition just sent to us after the fact?
Sure. Not showing up red line in years?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what's changed. But I've read it, and I don't have any issues with the way it's written, but I'm just curious what changed.
Okay.
Three, and Item J approval of terms of and authorization.
I always like to make sure we don't have any comments. So, other than Steve's questions for J, do we have anything else? Seeing nothing else, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a half second and a half second?
Two halves make a whole.
Two halves make a whole. So any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Well, now move on to our old business. Tonight we have four public hearings. Our first, Item A, is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28L, Group C, Partial 16.00, from R2 to C4. It's requested by Phyllis Campbell. The property requested to be rezoned contains 1.29 acres and is located at 106 Wright Street. And Kevin, I think this is under old business because we deferred last time. Is that correct?
Yes. This was still a first reading. It was deferred last month on first reading, so this would not be an actual public hearing or second reading. It would just be for first reading. This is a rezoning request at 106 Wright Street. It's about 300 feet west of the intersection with Front Street. This is our, the land use plan we call, this is our depot district character area. Would support a mix of uses and services that are more urban lot sizes and setbacks. Retail, restaurant, office, attached residential, multifamily residential uses are particularly appropriate for this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and C1. There is an adequate fire flow at this location currently for commercial development, so no commercial use of the property would be allowed until that fire flow issue is resolved. This is a part of our, would be improved with some of the water projects that the town is undertaking, but it would not be here at this time. Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, four for and one against. Staff would recommend approval.
Okay. Counsel, questions on this?
Kevin, that little strip of blue, I guess, to the east or northeast of it, is that the C1 area?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
Kevin, I know at some point, we looked at this on historic planning some years ago about the potential, maybe in the future, of turning that more of this into the historic district. Is that something that would fit if that ever occurred, in your opinion?
Certainly. I mean, I think the base zoning, whether it's R2 or C4, would still, could still be, work either one, because it could be utilized within the historic district if we ever chose to make that change.
Talk a little bit about things C4 will allow.
Sure. Yes, C4 is, it's our neighborhood service business district, is what it's called. It would certainly allow retail type uses, a restaurant that is a sit-down restaurant, not a fast food restaurant with a drive-through, but a sit-down restaurant could be there. Service uses, you know, hair salons or dry cleaners, things like that could go in that district. Offices, most any office use, you know, real estate or attorney office or, you know, that type of use would certainly be allowed in that district as well.
So I think, you know, based on those things, I mean, historic overlay, to me, is important for the area and the aesthetics, but based on the things that you've listed, I mean, all of those things kind of fit even if the historic overlay was there. So the base zoning kind of fits the area as a C4, at least, you know, the way I see it, right?
Yeah, it is, if it's commercial on one side, you have residential on the other side, but it's actually one of the church's parking lots, so it's not really a residential use, you know, it is a residential zone. You do have residential across the street and some residential behind it still.
Yeah, but it's very possible that, you know, those properties will go commercial at some point as well, the way the Depot's expanding, so.
Well, as we've gone down Front Street to at least one, maybe two properties, as we're making the turn into Hazelwood, we have rezoned those to a C4, which is kind of, again, that neighborhood commercial feel. And I think even one of them mentioned the possibility of a hair salon or something.
There is a hair salon in one of those tracks, yeah.
Other comments or questions?
If they decide to change the look on the outside of the building, do we have any recourse, or is that under this? Are they allowed to just change it however? Would that have to come before the planning, or?
Yeah, any, you know, the change of use of this building, if they utilize the current building to a commercial use, there would have to be a site plan submitted. Depending on the level of what the site plan is, it may or may not have to go to Planning Commission. If they just utilize the existing building and add some parking and change the use, if it's not over a 10% addition to the existing building, it's something that staff could review administratively. If they were to take this building down and build something new, that would have to come back to code of planning commission, certainly, or add on more than 10%, it would have to go to planning commission. As far as the look of the building, if it's, if they utilize the existing building, design review doesn't apply. If they add on, to the point, 50% addition, it would require, to meet designer view without even being in the historic district, you have to meet our designer view as any commercial construction.
So if they decided to change the paint or paint the brick on the outside or just do something like that, they can do that?
Certainly, they can do that. They can do that even if it's within the historic overlay, as long as they go to the Historic Zoning Commission.
That's correct.
Right.
Didn't we select a certain amount of palette colors or something at some point for historic?
It is. Yes, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve. Staff comments?
A motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance amending the town's municipal code Title 12 Building Utility, et cetera codes, Chapter 9, Code's Enforcement and Inspection Division, Sections 12-901-904 and 12-1002-1014. Jeffrey L.?
Yes. Mayor and counsel, as we've discussed previously, for Section 12-9, basically what this does is it just clarifies what we've been doing, which is the building official reports directly to the town manager, and the town manager also appoints the building official. And then in the second section of 12-1001, it's, clarifies responsibilities, parameters of the codes that are subject to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and just makes the language just a little bit easier for the, an explanation of what that board will encompass.
Questions for Jeff on this? This is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance amending Municipal Code Title 14, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter 2, Planning Department, Sections 14-201 and 14-202. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, and based on the previous public hearing that we just had, this is a follow-up for Title 14, which basically makes it clear that the town planner is not the department head of the Code's Enforcement, it'd be the town manager.
Questions for Jeff on this one? Okay. This also is a public hearing, so I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next public hearing is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, Partial 75.00, to be rezoned from C2 to PCD. It's requested by Chris Slovan. The property requested to be rezoned contains 1.63 acres and is located on Rock Springs Road and Austin Lee Drive.
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this is a rezoning request. It's at the northwest corner of Rock Springs Road and Austin Lee Drive. The land use plan for this area is the Sam Ridley Corridor character area, which would support a combination of retail and service uses that serve both local and regional customers. The surrounding zoning is C2 and C4. This proposed PCD is to allow an automobile rental business with a detached car wash for use by the business only, not open to the general public. The proposed rental office building is 1,643 square feet with an attached canopy, and the car wash is 1,213 square feet with an attached canopy. Access would be from Rock Springs Road, as well as the private access drive to the rear. The proposed buildings do meet design review requirements. The Planning Commission did review this request, did recommend approval, four for, one against, with three conditions. One, just to specify, that the allowed use on the property is an automobile rental company, where the rentals are on a temporary basis, as well as a car wash for use by the rental business, which is not open to the public. The roll-up doors shown on the car wash building are required to be a clear plexiglass for shimmer material and not metal, as shown, and landscape buffering will be required around that car wash building. Staff would recommend approval as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Questions for Kevin on this? We had pretty healthy discussion on this last time, so. Seeing no questions or comments from council, I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close public hearing, go to council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is a consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 18, part of Partial 10.00, to go from C2 to a PUD, requested by Gary Vogren. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 40.94 acres and is located on Sam Ridley Parkway West and Motlow College Boulevard. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this property is located at the northeast corner of Sam Ridley Parkway and Motlow College Boulevard. The land use plan for this area is the Sam Ridley Corridor character area, as just as the previous request. It would be consistent with our land use plan. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 in town and ag, agriculture in Laverne. This proposed pod is for a mixed-use development, which would allow up to 280,400 square feet of retail/restaurant space, up to 245,000 square feet of office space, up to two hotels with 120 rooms each, and up to 75 for sale residential condominium units. There would be some flexibility in some of the uses, such as one of the buildings will be either a hotel or office space, depending on the market. The square footage is given would be the maximum allowed for each category. The project does propose to utilize shared parking, as many uses would have offsetting peak parking needs. Access would be from Sam Ridley Parkway, as well as Motlow College Boulevard in three different locations. There would be amenities provided for the residential uses, which do meet the town requirements. There would also be pedestrian connectivity to the residential areas to the west, along Genie Lane, as well as to Motlow State Community College. The signage plan is somewhat incomplete, but it is proposed, and those pole signs would be allowed within the development, and that the plan would otherwise comply with the sign ordinance. As the developer finalizes that signage plan, it may be that the pod amendment may be necessary, depending on what is proposed. A traffic study was submitted, which recommends several improvements, including signalization of the proposed access to Sam Ridley Parkway, extending left turn lanes, and construction of additional lanes within Sam Ridley Parkway and other improvements. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, five for zero against. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin? I think we've had a lot of discussion on this and a lot of excitement, but there are no comments or questions, then we'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, go to council for a motion.
I'll move we approve.
A motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brian, timeline on that one at all?
The next step will be working with the developer on a closing date on the property and then a site plan that we can work from, so he can begin to do his site work. And I know that they're excited to get started, so.
Good. So you think that'll be soon?
I think it will be soon.
Great. That's what we like to hear.
And that's all relative to what soon means.
Soon, like tomorrow, they'll be here when the doors open soon?
No, ma'am. There is a window of, I think right now, Jeff, remind me, in the contract, there's a 90-day window, I think that's correct, that we'll be working through.
Great.
Inspection.
Okay. We'll move on to new business, our Planning Commission report. Our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to annexation in PRD and R1 zoning of property located on Tax Map 50, Partial 33.02, and part of Parcells 33.00 and 72.00, requested by Oliver Constable on behalf of two different property owners containing 47.83 acres. The property is located on Lee Road and Rocky Fork Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and counsel, this is a request for property for annexation on, located on Rocky Fork Road and Lee Road, southwest of the intersection of those two streets. The land use plan would support medium density, single-family residential development in this area. Surrounding zoning is RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area upon annexation except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district. CUD has indicated that there is adequate domestic flow in this area, but not fire flow. Staff did receive an FID or Facilities Improvement Determination Letter from CUD, which details three options for the developer to consider to correct that fire flow deficiency. There are two existing houses which would be annexed with this request, and both would be removed as a part of the development. As a part of this request, staff recommended annexation of approximately 4,542 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Lee Road, approximately 1,405 linear feet of the existing right-of-way of Jordan Lane. The proposed PRD is for 88 lots of 41.66 acres, with the remaining 6.17 acres to be zoned R1. The houses would be a minimum of 1,800 square feet of living area with a two-car garage. Materials would be a mix of brick, stone, and cement board siding. All requirements of the town with regards to open space, parking, and setbacks would be met. A portion of this property is located within the hundred-year floodplain, so development would require compliance with Article 9 of the zoning ordinance. One access point is shown to Lee Road with a sub-street to the west, and then access, potential access to either the existing Rocky Fork Road or the new Rocky Fork Road/McQun Drive connector route is shown as well. The proposed route does, for that new roadway does cross this site. It would be accommodated as a part of this project. In addition, the existing 20-foot prescriptive right-of-way for Jordan Lane is within this project's limits. The developer has proposed that this road be abandoned and eliminated with the development, except for an access easement granted to the two houses on adjacent tracks which do utilize it for access. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, six for zero against, with the following conditions: a traffic study is required, and any improvements recommended by that study must be completed by the developer. The required minimum fire flow is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI, and as CUD has indicated, this fire flow cannot be met at this time. No plans could be approved until a timeline for improvements to correct this issue has been established. Development of the property will require a hydrologic, hydraulic study to be submitted for review due to the proposed floodplain alterations. This would ultimately lead to a lawnmower application to FEMA, and that a landscape buffer is required between lots 62 through 65 and the proposed Rocky Fork Road/McQun Drive connector. With those conditions, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, the two-point whatever acres down there at the bottom that says out parcel, what happens with that land?
Basically, it's just going, at this point, it's being zoned R1, and there's no plans for development of that property right now. They're letting that be, it has been requested to be annexed. It is a part of this overall track of land. They're not looking to develop it at this time. I think it will be certainly at some point in the future, but right now they're just looking to leave it alone and not develop it.
Gotcha, okay. And that, sorry, and that cut through, the gray there, that's the potential future connector, because the thoroughfare diagrams that they include in their PRD looks like the road is much higher up in the development, but?
That's correct. That's our current thoroughfare plan. We'll be presenting this as an amendment to the thoroughfare plan that's our next planning commission meeting to add. There are new routes that we have chosen with all of the, Ruth, and we have got all of our other partners on there.
The entire route would be, the entire route?
Yes, yes. Yeah, this entire, this, the entire 101 feet of right-of-way that's proposed is shown within, crosses this property on the southeast side.
Kevin, I know in Planning Commission, we talked about the traffic study, and this size of a residential development is not normally required. My big thing there was to try to make sure that if we needed a turn lane, we could get a turn lane. Is there a way we can trade that out? In other words, can we suggest a turn lane and not require the traffic study? That was the main goal behind it.
That's certainly something that I think this council could amend those conditions, I believe. If that's what you wanted to do, certainly that's an option for you.
That's really why I suggested it to begin with. I think until that road's improved, and Charles, I think, was able to speak to this the other night for us, that road is targeted for widening and improvement, but until it happens, if this comes before that, it's still currently a two-lane road. I'd feel a lot better if we could go ahead and just get the turn lane in there. I'm not too worried about a traffic study being done for that reason, if we can get the turn lane instead.
Sure.
So, Mark, are you saying make that a part of the requirements for the approval?
For approval. I would make that suggestion, just because that's the whole reason I asked for the traffic study to begin with. But if we can get, if we can get that in place of the traffic study, it resolves everything I was looking for.
Okay.
Well, and I support that 100%, because as this road continues to develop and to, we get to a point in time in which we see this being a three-lane highway, which I think we'll eventually get there, you know, and looking at it in totality, I think it's better to get cars moved out of the way and to allow some stacking if we decide to go forward with that. And I would want to make it a requirement.
Well, you know, kind of pile on, I'm not sure traffic study makes a lot of sense when we're fixing to re-change the whole route anyway. The study may show that they have to make a change at Lee and Seminary, which is really not even, yeah, not even needed.
Yeah. But if the cart comes before the horse, which, you know, with road improvements, we never know how long it's gonna take to get that road done. But if the development comes before the road improvements, I think it's a lot safer to go ahead and install the turn lane there, just for those reasons, for safety reasons, much as anything. So the traffic study, you're right, Steve, is really irrelevant on a development this size.
Other questions or comments?
In our packet, there's a map, it's called Location Map, but it shows Aspen Grove on there, and then adjacent to it, it shows a parcel 18 with 275 lots, and then another with 52 lots. Is there a relationship between these?
Well, I have, have that in front of me. I think there was something that was looked at, or some, I think, maybe some potential other developments that may be included in that. Aspen Grove is under development already on the north side of Lee Road. I'm trying to find that map. It's on the north side of, I can't remember the number of lots, but it's under development already, kind of west, quite a bit west of this location, on the north side. This is the only other thing, as far as immediately around it, there's no development immediately surrounding this track at this time. The gray is still developing.
This is not showing these being, as being north of it. They show them as being west of it, down Lee Road.
Okay. Go down a couple of, I'm not sure if you have what we're looking at, but if you'll, if you can go down a couple of pages, you'll see it. HG's talking about showing this track in green, then a, a large. H G's talking about showing this track in green, then a larger track in yellow, and then smaller one in light blue.
429 page number on, I don't know how consistent these are.
Yeah, I don't have the...
Here.
...pack in front of me. Okay, that was something else, that was a, yeah, I actually probably do have that. That was, that's attached to the Consolidated Utility District, the FID letter right here. I think that's an adjacent property. They're looking at, as part of the, the potential improvements to correct the fire flow issue, I think there was, that is an adjacent tract of land that has, has been discussed, this potential development with CUD evidently. I haven't actually had any discussions with them about that, or the 52 lots of the one. I didn't, I'm aware that they have some potential...
But right now, these are bare property.
Those are vacant tracts.
No plans on file for them or anything?
No requests have been submitted for annexation at this time. That's all, I think they were looking at potentially as a way to spread some cost out for those water line improvements that would be needed to get the fire flow that they need. So I think they were looking at some potential other developments there that could be involved with that. So that certainly is something that could happen, but as of right now, all we're looking at is that one development, 88 lots.
Very good, thanks, sir.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve with, in lieu of a traffic study, that a turn lane be required.
Do we have a second?
You're talking about only road, right?
Only road, yes.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance amending the text of Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article 9 Floodplanes. Kevin?
Yeah, this is some cleanup language, or, you know, the council approved this back in, at the last month's meeting in April, to completely rewrite our Article 9. The, this amendment was sent to FEMA back in January for review to make sure we had everything right and...
They jumped right on getting back to you, didn't they?
They got, they got back to me last Tuesday. So, with a few changes, very minor changes, but they wanted them changed as quickly as possible, so.
Let's wait as long on that as they did for us, how about that?
Well, I wouldn't recommend that, ma'am. Because they always hold that thread over us, because we'll kick you out of the floodplain, flood management, or flood insurance program. So these are some very minor changes, added one definition, a couple of changes on some map numbers, and one other cleanup item regarding the three feet above versus one foot above on the, for residential, new residential structures, so. And then they also, at the very end, they, they were very insistent that we include within the zoning ordinance itself, the date, the mayor's signature, the town clerk's signature, and the date of the public hearing, and all that kind of stuff. They want that in the actual text of the zoning ordinance itself, not just the adopting ordinance that you would adopt, so that's the last change on the very last page, so. The planning commission did review, review this Thursday night, did recommend approval, and staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? Do we have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Item three is consideration of a request from Justin Crutchfield for a one-lot subdivision.
Yeah, this is a request, this is not an ordinance, it's just an approval request for a subdivision. This is a one-lot subdivision on Rock Springs Road, just west of Cook's Lane. It's supposed to be one point, one lot, 1.73 acres utilizing an onsite septic system instead of public sanitary sewer. The nearest sewer line is at Gwyn Farms, which is about 2,600 feet east of this site. The subdivision regulations require any subdivision which does not connect to the town sewer system to be reviewed by the town council in addition to the planning commission, so that's why it is in front of you. The planning commission did review this, and it did approve it unanimously, staff would also recommend approval.
Any questions for Kevin on this?
So they're not asking to, to attach to the sewer, it's just they're having to bring it because they're already, they are not?
Yeah, correct, correct. It's a subdivision because it's a division of land less than five acres. It's typically something we could, one lots, subdivisions are typically something that staff can review administratively, you don't even have to go to the planning commission. But because this was on utilizing septic system and not sewer, it had to come to planning commission and this body as well.
Questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
I'll move we approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. We'll now move on to item B, which is our packaged liquor board report. There were no applications for the town council to consider at this time. So we'll move on to item C, which is consideration of an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024. Rex?
Hello, Mayor, Council. The ordinance and summarized budget for fiscal year 23-24 have been submitted for your consideration. I've attached a changes from retreat to first read spreadsheet for your convenience. It details the budget changes from what was presented at the retreat. Department heads and management have been working on the budget starting in December. We helped the budget retreat in April, where we spent the better part of the day going over the entire budget. At the April workshop, we gave an overview of all of our funds, and the draft budget is on our website for easy viewing for any of our citizens. We ask that you would approve this.
I think we have been over this multiple times.
Sure.
I would bet, though, not as many times as Rex. What do you bet?
I bet Rex comes prepared.
I bet he does, too. Do you talk about this at dinner with Leslie?
That's not really on top of her...
We didn't ask you.
Talk you was talking.
Oh, do I have a motion to approve the budget? A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item D, consideration of an ordinance adopting the property tax rate for the fiscal year 2023-2024. Rex?
The tax rate ordinance establishes the property tax rate for fiscal year 23 and 24. Our recommendation is for the tax rate to remain the same from the prior year at 52.57 cents on each $100 of assessed taxable property. No change.
Okay, so no tax increase from the town of Smyrna?
That's correct.
So if for some reason there was a tax increase, it would not be from the town of Smyrna, correct?
That's right.
Okay, just want to make sure that everybody understands that. Council, do I have a motion?
We'll approve.
We're all second, Jerry.
Oh, so Jerry's got the motion, Mark's got the second. Anybody have any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Rex, thank you, for you and your staff, and Rex has a little bit of exciting news.
Yes, he does.
Yes, we do.
It's big news, that I've been waiting on for a long time.
Been a historic week for us. We have been notified from Moody's Investor Service that we have been upgraded from an AA1 to a AAA rating, the highest you can get.
I know six or seven years ago, when I first got elected, I was told that Smyrna couldn't get that rating.
She wasn't all in on that.
Yeah. She didn't believe it.
No, I knew we could, and I knew Rex and his team could get us there.
Rex.
It is major.
And I've had, actually, shared this with somebody today, the good news, and their question to me, and I want you to tell the public, why the town benefits from that kind of great rating?
When we have to go borrow money for, say, a 20- or 30-year bond, bonded debt, we get the lowest possible interest rate because we are not a risk of defaulting. Investors are assured to a high degree of probability that we, they're going to be paying.
It's like having an 850 credit rating.
Paying your bills on time, being fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' money, still doing projects and successfully getting those projects done, all those are great reasons to live in the town of Smyrna, and the tax rate remains the same. It's great news.
I know I have teased for a lot of years about why are we not, this bond rating, but I cannot tell you when Brian called me the other day.
Teased or threatened, is...
Threatened. Threatened.
Threatened, okay, threatened, whatever you want to call it, whatever.
Potato, potato.
Yes, but I want to tell you how excited, I mean, you were there, I was super excited to, to know that y'all's hard work has paid off, and not just yours, but everybody in the community and, and the, on our team, and I appreciate you and the job you do as well as all of our employees, and I think this is a really, really big deal, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, it takes a team effort from all of us, and that's what makes it even sweeter.
Agreed. Thank you, sir. Item E, consideration of an ordinance amending municipal code title 18, chapter four, relative to cross-connection control. You taking this, how do you follow that up?
Well, I'll just say that Jason gave a very detailed account of this at workshop, and the Cliff Notes version is, is basically that, obviously is related to cross-connections, but for backflow prevention devices that serve fire sprinkler systems, they'll shout, from now on, they shall be inspected by a third-party inspector each annually once. So I think Mike, he maybe had like 500 or something like that estimated, and so he's worked with Jason to develop this ordinance.
Yours was a little bit shorter than Jason's was the other day, but I think he was excited at all the work he'd done.
He hadn't, he, he's done a lot of work on it.
Put in a lot of work.
He's put in a lot of work on it.
Agreed. Questions for Jeff on this? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Okay, item F is appointment of one member to the beer board to serve an unexpired term ending in 2025. Amber, somebody had to, job changed or something?
Yes, her hours changed at work, and it was one of the members that we had appointed to serve an unexpired term, so we're now going to fulfill that unexpired term again, so 2025 will be the new term limit, and I just need one member, please.
Okay, and we have an application that is on our desk as well as one that we have in our packet.
Yes, and one came in after I ran the packet, that's why it's printed on your desk.
Okay. So this is council nominated and confirmed by majority council vote, so at this point, I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate Amy Harrison for the beer board.
Amy Harrison. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll close the floor to nominations, and since we only have one member to appoint, and we only had one nomination, all in favor of Amy Harrison, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Amy, and Amber, you'll get in touch with Ms. Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute the TDEC ARP grant documents relative to the trunk line A sewer rehab. Hey, Mike?
Hey, how are you?
Great.
Good. So we finally got the contract, this is part of the American Rescue Plan grant funding. It is being managed by TDEC. The grant is for a little over three, a little under 3.9 million, it is a 35% match. We will be using this grant to basically complete the rest of the basin that they're working in now, A8 and A9 behind Front Street. This will also have some repairs in the older part of town across North Lowry where Sam Davis is, and handle the, upgrading the trunk line all the way from just west of Highland Avenue to the wastewater plant.
Okay, questions for Mike on this? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now move on to item 10, which is our status reports. Rex?
The March state share tax, we received $626,857. For the March of local sales tax, we received $1,478,814, and as you can see from your charts there, our sales taxes are above budget.
Questions for Rex on this?
Tell them, H G.
That's right, I was going to say, tell them.
You know, we all ought to think about shopping local. Seems to pay off, doesn't it?
It does.
Yes, it does.
Sure does, look at that tax rate, look at that bond rating.
Might as well be kind while we're doing it, too, or get that out of the way.
Okay, anything else?
Get being kind out of the way.
That's right. Okay, department heads or directors, anything tonight? Nothing? Amber May?
I just want to wish all the mothers that have your Mother's Day, that will be taking place this weekend, so husbands, make sure you spoil your wives, and children, your mothers, okay? That's all.
Brian?
Mayor and Council, I have a couple things to share with you tonight. One, I'm real pleased to start off with, I wanted to ask you to join me in congratulating Officer Robert Cash. He's one of our newest promotions at the police department, and Mr. Cash will be moving up to the rank of corporal, and this is one of several recent promotions we've had at the police department, and we appreciate what they do on a daily basis. Also, I wanted to share something, you know, I think a couple weeks ago, we talked about it being Telecommunicators Week, and we talked about sometimes there that calming voice in the night, or in the hour of despair for many people. Received a really nice email to the police department that was forwarded up to me, and wanted to recognize one of our telecommunicators named Samuel, and another person that was involved in the call, but they didn't get their name, but this was a call that came in from a Smyrna resident where they had their mother-in-law failing and being, had fallen and was unresponsive, and the lady that wrote the email said that she knew CPR, but in that moment of panic, it completely left her. This individual very calmly walked her through the procedures and what to do. She was able to resuscitate her mother, mother-in-law. Fortunately, her mother-in-law did not make it after a few days at the hospital, but she was still so appreciative of the time that they still had with her, their mother-in-law from the time of the original incident, that they had some closure in those final days because we were able to help them, and I just want to give a shout out to our telecommunicators, sometimes they're that silent hero, but this truly proves the net value and the worth of these folks, and we do appreciate them. Not to sound like I'm on a broken record, but tonight, we also have another email from a citizen of Smyrna, and wanted to express some thank you. Mr. Wayne Lambert wrote thanking the police department, Officer Kettering, Kowalski, and Baggett. His wife was traveling in Smyrna in his truck, and the truck caught on fire, and these three officers came to her rescue somewhere down around Spring House Church, and then also thank you to the fire department for responding to that fire and making sure that all family members were safe until somebody could get to them. A couple things are going to go up on the screen now. Smyrna Event Center, we are hiring. If you're interested, we are, we are looking for some folks for the seasonal work in the kitchen and the weekend buffet service, so if you're interested in a job with the town of Smyrna, we do have some, at the event center, openings. You may notice, many of the flags are at half-staff, those that are not, we hope you will oblige this, this passing of the half-staff by the President of the United States on behalf of the, the people that were senselessly killed in violence at Allen, Texas on May the 6th. The half-staff requirement is the 7... The half-staff, uh, requirement is the seventh through the eleventh of this month. We always like to make sure people know why the flags are at half-staff. And, uh, when we do have that, if you'll look on our social media, many times we'll have that posted, so you'll know what's going on. Last Thursday was International Firefighters' Day, and we are just so grateful and thankful, uh, that our firefighters are recognized because the job they do on a daily basis, being the guardians over our community, is not unheralded. We do appreciate them so much. As you know, uh, many of us participated in the Earth Day cleanup from the town and some other folks, but we wanted to recognize TSC Marketing, Plastic Optimum, and B and B, BBB Industries, for particip, for participating in the Adopt a Highway cleanup on Earth Day. Uh, and just wanted to make other folks aware that we do have opportunities. If somebody would like to work with us and adopt a highway mile, uh, we have some opportunities. Just reach out to the Streets Department, to, uh, Tammy or Tom, uh, and they can get them, uh, get them involved. Next, Business Before Hours was held by our local Chamber of Commerce at the, uh, TCAT here in Smyrna. Had several people to, uh, participate in that, our Councilman Jerry Short, myself, Assistant Town Manager Todd Spearman, and our Smyrna Police Chief, uh, Jason Irvin was there. And it was a, a great morning to get a little refreshment and hear a little bit about what TCAT's doing. Also, myself and Assistant Manager Todd Spearman, uh, joined the Senior Activity Center of, uh, Smyrna's Executive Director Fran Dunn, uh, to spend a little time at the Senior, uh, Activity Center here in Smyrna on their open house and their outdoor expo. And I tell you, it was a, it was a beautiful day and a lot of people out there. Uh, it was a lot of fun, and, uh, it was a great success, and we do appreciate, uh, what our senior citizens, uh, Activity Center does for the town of Smyrna, serving our, our clientele. Next, the Smyrna Elementary Schools, uh, String Family Night was held. It was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was actually the night of our workshop. And we had several departments, uh, attend this and, uh, share with the, uh, young folks and their families things that are going on in Smyrna. Uh, would like to recognize the, uh, Smyrna Police Department, Smyrna Parks and Rec, Smyrna Gas Department, Smyrna Stormwater, and other representatives that were out. And, uh, you know, uh, I have to say, Smyrna Elementary does a lot of these type of events. You know, they do the truck event, those kind of things, and it is so much fun. I hated that we didn't get to participate because we were sitting in here having a meeting, uh, but everybody had a good time at Smyrna Elementary. Swimming lessons, it's that time of the year, and it's time to register, uh, at the, uh, the SOAC. Uh, if you're interested in swimming lessons, I would tell you, it's limited space and it fills up very quickly. So, if you have any desire to get swimming lessons through the Smyrna SOAC, please contact them. Rex has already said this, but I did want to make everybody aware that the town budget in its whole, uh, in its entirety is available on our website. If you would like to go to the town website and pull up the, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, it is available for you to see. I was talking with Hal Loughlin this morning at the golf course. Uh, I was talking to him here in my office about the golf course. I was not at the golf course. I don't get much time to go out there, but I tell you, uh, spring and summer are right, right around the corner here, and, uh, man, they are really having some record, uh, use of the golf course. So if you have some, uh, plans to get out and enjoy around the golf, whether it's weekday or weekend, uh, get online and book your tee time because they're going fast. Uh, I rode by there this weekend, and if you'll remember, Sunday was a little bit of a rain day, and I, I could not believe how many golf carts I still saw out on the golf course. I figured it was Steve.
Last Friday, it wasn't me, but last, last Friday, there was, uh, thunderstorm warnings, and everybody thought it was gonna rain all day. It was, if you remember, ninety percent chance, and then it just kind of faded away. So I booked a tee time at eight fifty in the morning because I figured everyone else is gonna stay away, the weather's gonna miss us, and it's gonna be a perfect day for golf. That's exactly what happened, but when I got there at eight fifty, there were people lining the sidewalk trying to get those open tee times. So everyone else saw that the weather passed, and they came out in droves.
They did.
The greens of the golf course are probably as good as I've ever seen them. They aerated, I think, a little early this year. Because of that, they've healed faster, and, uh, they are in great shape.
The golf course does look good.
Yeah, it's, it's in really good shape.
As I ride by, I see it.
Maybe you should go out.
Uh, next, I'd like to mention, uh, we are hiring also in our Parks and Recs, uh, in the Maintenance and Labor Department. This is for part-time and seasonal positions. So if you're over sixteen years of age and you have some interest in a summer job, uh, reach out, uh, to our HR department or to the Parks and Rec. Uh, I think our salaries get, uh, are between twelve fifty and thirteen seventy-five an hour. And, uh, there's some good jobs, uh, for the young folks in the community if they're looking for summer, summer work. This morning, uh, we were pleased to attend the annual Community Breakfast Celebration at the Watlau Buddhist Temple. Uh, the head monk and several other, other of the monks were there to greet us. Our friend Chato Sorrento was there, uh, to interpret for us, to be honest, uh, but, uh, he did a great job. But, uh, we had, uh, Commissioner Beverly, who serves as one of our, uh, police department employees, Rex, uh, Todd, myself, and, uh, Chief Irvin was there. It was a good time. If you ever get a chance to go do this with us, uh, it's a lot of fun. And we were out of there by eight o'clock, but you gotta get up and be there by about six forty-five, so.
That leaves me and HG out.
Yes, a couple of you are not gonna make it.
Me too.
But it was a lot of fun.
I'd like to go for dinner.
Yeah, that's right. I'll get breakfast just not that early.
Uh, the last thing I have, and it's the thing I always end up with, and that's love where you live. Nobody trashes Tennessee. Uh, we continue to fight that battle. I will tell you that there's a lot of stuff coming out of the state right now. Uh, the mayor shared an email that she had received that I'd gotten a copy of as well. Uh, there is, uh, a lot of folks getting very interested in the trash issue in the state of Tennessee, uh, from the economic development standpoint and the effect it's having on our farmers and in our stormwater system. Uh, we're probably gonna see some investment by the state to try to get a handle on some of this trash issue. I appreciate the folks locally that do their part. Uh, you know, I'm constantly reminded, uh, by my friend out in Seven Oaks, uh, Tony Proctor, of all the work that he's doing and the things that, uh, he sees. And, uh, we just appreciate people like him and the folks out at Seven Oaks for taking trash seriously. Uh, we did do a lot of work on the trash issue during Earth Day. Uh, unfortunately, we don't need to have one day a year that we focus on trash. It needs to be a regular event. So, love where you live, folks, take a little pride in our community, and, uh, let's, uh, make sure the trash gets in a receptacle, not on the road. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks. Jeff?
Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers. And, uh, also, Mayor, you may speak on it, but, uh, thoughts and prayers to, uh, the Sheriff's Office for the loss of, uh, their Deputy Jacob Bowe this week. And, uh, that's all.
What else?
Um, we have a slide for the survey. So I'm gonna talk about this one more time. The Smyrna Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee is still, um, undertaking its community asset survey. And the last day to take the survey will be May the fifteenth. And as a part of taking the survey, you will be entered into a one hundred dollar Visa card giveaway. And that, uh, drawing will occur at our council workshop on May the twenty-fifth. Um, if you know of someone who needs to complete the survey, you may visit townofsmyrna.org or go on our social media pages, and there is a QR code. Okay. And also, there are a couple of citizens who had some milestone birthdays this month, and so I wanted to just acknowledge them. Um, first, there's Miss Delouis Long, who turned one hundred on May the fourth. And she had a party and, um, invited me to the party, and the town sent a, um, a certificate in honor of her birthday. And then there is Mr. Andrew Taylor, who turned eighty-five, and Mrs. Dorothy Taylor, who turned ninety. And so I wanted to just recognize them because, um, none of them actually look like they've reached these milestones. So I'm hoping that when, that I have those type of genes when I get that seasoned. Won't say old, but seasoned. So happy birthday to all of them. And also, um, I'd like to say congratulations to all of the graduates for this year. Um, we have a lot of, uh, graduations coming up in the next couple of weeks, so congratulations to all of you, and also Happy Mother's Day to all of the mothers. And that's all I have, Mayor.
HG?
Um, Happy Mother's Day to my mother. Happy Mother's Day to my children's mother, my grandchildren's mother, and to your mother. That's all I've got.
Nothing else? Nothing else?
Already covered the rest of it.
Oh, you don't want to take it to get twice in?
Well, I mean, you know, shopping local is a good thing.
So shop local and be kind to your mother.
And be kind to your mother.
Got you.
I'll add, uh, my, uh, happy birthday, or happy birthday, Happy Mother's Day wishes. Um, and I know Mark's got something down there to talk about, but just to let everyone know, uh, Todd and Mark and I are continuing our efforts in the culinary ribbon cuttings around town.
Y'all do kind of pop up at those.
It's amazing.
Seeking free lunch.
Often.
Not at nine.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Terry?
Okay, I think I have a slide. I, uh, last, uh, I guess it was Saturday, had the, uh, opportunity and privilege to go out to the Oaks subdivision and, uh, speak and give them an update at their HOA. They do it once, uh, once a year, and, uh, I went last year, and I was kind of surprised. They asked me to come back, but they, they did, and, uh, kind of gave an update on the projects and, and, uh, that are going on. So I had a good time out there. They, uh, they just kind of meet in a cul-de-sac and, uh, uh, sit there for a couple of hours, I guess, and just cover different things that are going on in the neighborhood. So, uh, I appreciate being asked to go there. Um, as mentioned before, uh, Happy Mother's Day, uh, for those of you that have your mother. You feel blessed, uh, to have them, so, uh, make sure you call them, talk to them, go see them, whatever you can do. Um, congratulations to, uh, Corporal Cash on his, uh, promotion as well, so, uh, thank you for all you do. And, uh, as Raquel and some others have mentioned, congratulations to all the graduates. And, uh, uh, just, I know we've got, uh, several schools in, in the area, so congratulations to those. And then the last thing, and you guys will probably hear me talk about this for the next several months, but the, uh, the class of nineteen seventy-three, uh, Smyrna High School is gonna be having their fiftieth class reunion. It's gonna be on September the sixteenth. Uh, we are holding it at the Smyrna Assembly Hall, so that way we're gonna have it right downtown Smyrna, uh, uh, there on Front Street. So, um, if you graduated in seventy-three, please come out. If you know somebody that graduated in seventy-three, please let them know as well. Uh, Charles Neil, you, if you would, let your brother know, and, uh, but, uh, we, um, cost is gonna be nothing, uh, and, uh, so just, uh, we just want to see everybody, so please, uh, let them, let them know and, and come out. So, that's all I got.
Say, will Benjamin Franklin be attending?
I wasn't gonna say anything, so I'm glad Tim did. No. I, I don't have much. Congratulations to the, uh, graduates. Um, I've got my nephew, Jesse Sullivan, who's graduated from Eagle Bowl High School this weekend. Um, and then, uh, some very close family friends, Keegan Wilkins and her fiance Chandler, graduated from UTC last weekend. So it's the season of graduates. Uh, Pam and I have kind of a standard. If you graduate high school, we give you one gift, and if you graduate college, we give you another. So we're having to go to the ATM a lot this month. But, uh, uh, also, um, Mother's Day, uh, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, uh, especially, uh, mine, uh, my mother, my grandmother, my mother-in-law. Um, fortunately, we have the Mother's Day banquet bu, buffet coming up Sunday. I don't know whether there are tickets left. Brian, did you already mention that?
I think there are a few spots. I think the mayor has that.
Okay, so I won't steal your thunder, but, um, luckily, my mother-in-law and my mother are gonna join me at the same time, so one meal and get both of them at the same time. So, Happy Mother's Day to all, all the mothers out there, including my wife and my children's mother, so thanks.
Mark and Mark?
I think I have a slide. Here it is. What a day at Whataburger, right? So, uh, Tim, myself, uh, Jeff Peach, and Todd, we got free breakfast today, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, they opened officially this week where their drive-through and their dining areas open. And so there was a lot of excitement behind Whataburger getting here. Well, guess what? Now they're here. Uh, that being said, we've mentioned graduates, congratulations to all the graduates, but another thing kind of near and dear to my heart are the teachers. So, uh, all you teachers out there that, uh, have made it through another year, congratulations on that. My wife comes from the school system. I know, Mary Esther, you did. Donna Shelton's sitting out there. A lot of people that worked in the school system really, uh, they, they work hard, y'all. They don't, you don't realize how hard they have to work every day at that school building. So I wanted to recognize all of our teachers. That is something that Whataburger is getting behind in the community this week. So if you are a teacher and you have a badge or a, something that identifies you as a teacher, you can go through their drive-through, and they'll give you some sort of free breakfast item. And, uh, they're doing that from the eighth through the twelfth, uh, this week, and, uh, no charge. So they just want to give back to the community that way. So go have yourself a, a Whataburger day. Um, the kids' safety event, I don't, are you talking about that? I don't want to take it from you.
Yes, I'm talking about it.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna leave that alone, though. Uh, Jerry mentioned the class of seventy, but what Jerry didn't mention is Jerry had a birthday this week.
He said seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
Yeah. If he had said seventy, I would've said something, 'cause I was born in seventy-one, so.
Jerry could be. Jerry could be your daddy. We've, we've actually went down this path before, and I've asked my mom, she did not know Jerry.
She never dated Jerry.
No.
Did she go wrong?
He did not take her to wrong. This is called off the rails. I want to wish Jerry publicly a happy birthday. Jerry had a birthday this week, and, uh, he's what, forty-nine, something like that? He, he won't admit it, but he's still a young guy. Uh, congratulations, Rex, to you and your team on the, the newest announcement of the Moody's credit rating for our town. Uh, didn't know that ever, I'd ever see that, being on the council, but I'm glad that we, we are. You and your finance team back there especially, the whole town, all the staff, all the director, everybody works in concert, Brian, all your people. But I know you guys were calling on that back there, Rex, and I just want to recognize you for that. Happy Mother's Day. There's a lot of mothers in my life, uh, my mom, my daughter. Uh, they're, they're just, Happy Mother's Day to every mother out there. Today, I don't have my mother any longer. She passed away nine years ago today. So today was her birthday. Happy, uh, Happy Mother's Day this weekend, but Happy Birthday to my mom in heaven. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks. So I have a couple of housekeeping items. First of all, um, all of the Smyrna town employees and the Smyrna Police Department would like to offer condolences to the Roethford County Sheriff's Office as well as Detective, um, Jacob Booze for, um, passing. I will tell you, it has been a really, really tough time for the Sheriff's Department. Um, Jacob was actually, um, pretty close to Britt and was in his department before Britt got a promotion. So it's been a tough week in, in our house, and, but I will tell you, they pull together not only as, um, a department, but also, um, pulling together for that family. So we will keep them in our thoughts and prayers and, um, arrangements. I think, or the end of next week is when, that it's gonna be. I'm not sure if it's Thursday or Friday, but we will keep you updated on that. Um, the town, um, we just filled it. Thank you. Um, the, had, a great time was had by all at the Kids' Safety Day. So thank you to TriStar Stonecrest Hospital, Smyrna Fire and Police Department, Smyrna Parks and Rec, and the Smyrna Event Center. I will tell you, I have never seen so many excited kids. When those names were called, winning those bicycles, um, some were wearing drunk glasses and driving, um, or riding in golf carts. Um, so it was a good time had, had by all. So thank you to everyone involved. We're happy to bring back our Live on the Lawn Concert Series. It will begin May nineteenth, so come out and enjoy live music at the Smyrna Event Center. Um, Mike, there'll be food, food trucks and family fun events as well, correct? Okay. Our Smyrna Depot Farmers Market begins on Saturday, May the twentieth. Come by and get some produce there and visit with the vendors. It, the event is weekly, May twentieth through September the sixteenth. Um, join us for our fifteenth annual Boat Day on Saturday, June seventeenth, from nine to one at Jefferson Springs Recreation Area.
Whether the town manager floats or not.
Well, that's where they go get their fifty-dollar swimming lessons first.
Yes. But I thought the chief has to wear the squirrel costume.
That's correct.
And it, it does float, so you're good. You're good, so.
Float squirrel with a pistol.
The event is free and open to all ages. Um, we want to invite you to join up, to sign up for our Police and Fire Youth Academy. Um, it is June twelfth through the sixteenth. I can tell you, there are, there will be lots of fun activities, and you can do that on our townofsmyrna.org, um, webpage, and, um, ages. webpage, and ages, chief?
Ten to 13.
10 to 13. We'd love to have you. We would, we would invite each of you to join us on Memorial Day for our Memorial Day Ceremony on Monday, May the 29th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Captain Jeff Coos Memorial. If you have not attended one of these, I would highly encourage you and your family as well. It is usually about a 30-minute ceremony, but it is really inspirational. So come out and join us for Memorial Day. I was honored to speak at the Stewart's Creek High School Military Enlistment Celebration while you all were at Whataburger, and congratulations to the enlistees. I will tell you, it's very similar to what they do for kids that are gonna be going off to college to play sports, but this is for those joining the military. And the Army is fortunate to have the recruits like these individuals, and we wish each one of them the best in their military career, and to know that they have chosen to go off and defend our country is something pretty amazing, especially at that age. So thank you for having us there. We were pleased to attend the 20th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, and thank you to Greenhouse Ministries for hosting the event. Steve and HG, I didn't see you guys there. Oh, Steve, you were there, I forgot. You were in your pajamas, though, right? Because that was pretty early for you.
Yes.
And HG?
I'm in the picture with you.
HG, I know, HG was. You were there in spirit? But it was pretty early. It was, it was an early morning.
It was so early, you didn't see Steve?
No, I saw him, but he was in his pajamas. See, he's in his pajamas there.
Okay.
I want to thank Brown's Chapel Elementary students for coming out, the second grade class. It was our first group that was back for a field trip since COVID, and we were so excited to have them back, and it was all six classes of the second graders, and I will tell you, they asked great questions, and the parents were pretty enthusiastic as well. And so don't forget, the Coos run is Friday, September 15th, and registration is now open, and you can visit our town website to register. Quite a few of you have said congratulations to our graduates, specifically Stewart's Creek High School and Smyrna High School. Stewart's Creek graduation is Friday, May the 12th, at 7:00 p.m. at Murphy Center, and Smyrna High School's graduation is Saturday, May 13th, at 2:30 at Murphy Center. So congratulations to those graduates. Sunday is Mother's Day, and Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. We wish you the best. We did, we did mention Braxton, but I actually had that on my list as well. The Celebration of Life for Braxton was held Friday night, and it was a really moving ceremony, and Braxton touched a lot of lives. And the one thing they talked about most, all of his friends and adults that talked about, was his faith. And he knew where he was going, and he knew that he was going to be with his mama. And so it was a really uplifting night, but we will keep Stacy and his family in our thoughts and prayers. Last but not least is a little bit of a personal shout-out to Britt. Britt was honored with the Child Advocacy Center's Hometown Hero Award, and I was really proud of him. That's something that's near and dear to his heart. He serves on that board, and, don't get me wrong, all citizens in Rutherford County are important to him, but especially kids, and I appreciate the job that he does on behalf of them. When there is a crime against a child, it's something tough to see and to deal with, and he's had to deal with quite a few of those, and to look at the numbers of kids that crimes are against in our communities is pretty mind-boggling. So just know that there are those out there that are fighting for our kids, and we appreciate that. So congratulations to Britt. Anything else, counsel? Nothing else, we're adjourned.